I hereby call the regular city council meeting for Des Moines for October 19th to order, and with that, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, about an hour ago, Councilmember Pennington called me. He has a family emergency, and he may or may not make it tonight, but for right now, I'm looking for a motion to excuse.
No move.
Okay? Have a second. All those in favor? I'll pass a six-zero. All right, thank you. All right. Are there any correspondents not previously seen by council?
No other correspondents.
Okay. It'll now time for the public comment. I would just like to remind those participating, any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing council will be removed from the meeting, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first one we have is Ms. Louisa Banks.
It is warm in here. Anyway, my name's Louisa Banks. I live in Des Moines. Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. I attended the Wesley candidate forum the other night. There were several things that picked my attention, but unfortunately, the format didn't allow for me to raise those issues. But I was again amused, as well as perplexed, as to why the seven-zero vote with previous council members is such a sticking point. I served on council for seven years. I know for a fact that we scoured each agenda item, asked questions prior to council meetings, as well as in committee sessions where the items either started or were remanded. Excuse me. We thoroughly vetted the items, and I wonder why people think, and, you know, why they don't understand the issues that come before us. And little do I hear, "Thank you for moving us forward." I don't rarely hear, "Thank you, council, for moving us forward." Thank you, staff, for doing a really good job. We stayed informed, we were respectful, and as far as I'm concerned, we were very rarely contentious. So, we definitely questioned until we fully understood the issues on the topics that came before us thoroughly, might I add. If one would read, review, ask questions instead of slinging slogans, the facts are there. We move and are moving forward, and the silliness that is being spouted is just that silliness. Let's hope we can stop this nonsense about seven-zero vote, seven-zero club, childish and unwarranted, and also insulting. I work my butt off. So, work together to get this city where we need to be, deal with the issues, and be respectful. There's more hard work to do. Focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Banks. Moving on to Mr. Chuck Coleman.
Good evening, mayor, city council, deputy mayor, city manager, and staff. For the record, Chuck Coleman, Redondo Beach Drive South. Speaking to you today, representing approximately 200 members of the Redondo Community Association, on Saturday, October 21st, we would like to invite you and the community to Coffee with a Cop event at the Mass Center in Redondo District. The event is cosponsored by the Mass Center and Redondo Community Association and the Des Moines Police Department. The event runs for one hour, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The Mass Center is open to the public, starting at 10:00 a.m., and would like everyone to stay and tour the free aquarium and displays, which are an excellent community environmental education tool. Thank you, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Appreciate it. Moving on to Mr. Rick Johnson.
Counsel, mayor, deputy mayor, city manager. I've been attending council meetings for eight years now. Many of you have been here since 2015, when I first got involved, back in the seven-old days of voting. This has been going on well before 2015. I've watched other council meetings, and at times, they are not united. The Des Moines Council has been the same old, same old, and it has not been until recently that we have two council members opposed. Now we have the five-two club. Not always the same, good old boys and girl club. Why in the world have we had the same old council members for all these years? It's like the eighth wonder of the world. I can't reason how we can have seven members that agree on everything for all these years. It's a breath of fresh air. We have two members that vote for the good of the city and not always what the city manager wants, and I thank you for that. But we need more of you with strength to do what's right. In closing, I've been through the hard times when the city almost went bankrupt. The city almost had to borrow pay just to pay the payroll. In 2013, when there was a different city manager, the Washington State Auditor's Office wanted to work on an accountability audit report, and the city turned their noses up for any help. When the city took the marine funds to spend elsewhere to pay other cities' needs, but it would have liked to have been there during all that. Now, P.S., now the mayor and city manager are targeting Mr. Oxinger without cause. This council consists of two teams, the majority and the minority. Two other council members, Beck and Pennington, which are part of the majority, have done the same thing they are targeting Mr. Oxinger for. This is an attempt to try to get him removed for whatever line is following along. This information is not a council meeting for eight years, and there's no association with any council member before me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. We only have...
Do I need to sign up to speak?
Are you here for the public hearing? Because we just concluded the public...
The business?
The business?
I sent the letter to the mayor.
Oh, yes, I received that. You can come to the podium if you'd like. The last one, we'll allow it, because we're just transitioning. Go ahead. You have three minutes to speak.
I'm Nerma Kelsey, and I live at the Adriana Senior Apartments, and I'm very concerned about the conditions at the apartment, that ever since I moved in, when it was first built, that there has been a lot of sickness, that every winter, that the emergency is out there at least every day, sometimes twice a day. And what is happening, I believe, is that it was given a permit to build on polluted ground, and ever since we moved in, people have been getting very sick. I myself was in good health. I'm 88 years old. I was in good health until I moved there, and I have had nothing but problems. The property itself, the management, there's two managers there, and the management has shares in Village Concepts, which is the parent company of the Adriana. And I don't know if that has something to do with why they built it so shoddy and didn't really care about us being exposed to pollutants, but when we moved in, and even today, occasionally today, but when we moved in, the water, we couldn't even drink the water. It smelled like sulfur, and I know people who were building there. In fact, I was living in, my son and I, Jack and I, were living in the basement of Jim Delvin's apartment house while we watched it being finished. I had just sold my house up on 11th Avenue and moved down there, and so we were talking to the general contractor, who is the husband of one of the management, and he told us that he didn't even know how to read blueprints. Now, how could he be the one to design the building and to oversee the construction of it? It's no wonder that it is so shoddy. Everything is breaking down constantly. The doors keep being broken, and we can't get in except through one entrance. There are no ramps in case of a fire. That, how, well, they told me when I told them in the office, because I tell them, and I have written letters of complaint before to the city engineer and so forth, and I've always sent copies to management. So they see me as a troublemaker, and I am. But, you know, somebody has to look into this, I believe. So that is what I'm asking you to do, is to just inspect the building, see everything that's wrong. The air conditioning wasn't, there wasn't enough air conditioning power put in. Even it reaches about the fourth floor in the hallways, and it is so hot on the sixth floor. They don't have windows that open, so if you would look into it, please.
Thank you, ma'am. I got your, I received your letter today. The chief administrative officer and I spoke about it, and she was forwarding it to pursue whatever we could find in that regard. So I just wanted you to know.
Thank you very much. I'm really...
Thank you for the note.
I'm really happy that someone is...
And the city manager has a comment real quick.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you very, thank you, here. Thank you very much for your, excuse me, but we had heard from you earlier, and we, just so that you're aware, we put you in touch with one of the representatives of the owners, Mr. Langsford, and we will follow up with your concerns.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The land was donated by a famous basketball player, and so I know that he didn't expect for this to happen to elderly people there. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Moving on, the only chair and committee report is, the week prior, I met with several South King County mayors and the governor, and we talked about transportation-oriented development. Part of it is how we put housing around, easy access to transportation, to house people, particularly those of low incomes, and be able to afford them the ability to get to work. I talked to the mayor or the governor a little bit more, and I talked about our ferry service and the potential of some of that development downtown and being able to use a passenger ferry. He looked at opportunities for greener energy, and we had just, just a few days before, done a ferry, an electric ferry demo here when they were having a convention on the subject, and I shared that that was a great new venue, and that he should also consider that along with light rail bus and train. So, it was, it went well, and seemed very interested, and we hope to maybe get some of the money from the CARBA credits. We'll maybe update you on a little bit later. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. Couple of things. First of all, the city issued about two weeks ago, $25 million bond for Marina redevelopment, Marina steps, dock replacements, some other capital projects. That bond was sold at about 4.9% interest, fully subscribed, meaning it was entirely sold, and today, I'm pleased to say, at 9:30 this morning, the money was deposited in the city bank, so we're able to move forward with these projects. Great moment for the city. I'd like to ask Andrew, our Public Works Director, if you would just speak briefly about some of the public process involved with the Marina Steps development.
Yes, thank you, city manager, and good evening, council. Andrew Murgis, Public Works Director. Some good news, like Michael said, the bond closing was great that happened. And then the Marina Steps project in particular, online now, we have a website set up that you can access from the city website, that directs you to the project, as well as a public survey about the information that the citizens and anybody could read and respond to the project itself. We do plan on the next couple of days, working with the city clerk, on getting some postings up on social media to try to broadcast the project citywide, to try to solicit the most feedback we can get for the project. So, excited, it's a nice milestone for public input now to engage to try to get the Marina Steps project to fruition next year.
Thank you, Andrew. One other update, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor Buckson.
How would you access the website? What's it called, or what's the keywords?
Yeah, the easiest way to do it is to go to the city website, and then over in the links, right on the front page, you'll see the Marina Steps project website link. Just click on that, and then there'll be a link for the survey as well, so we're trying to make it as easy as possible, so you don't really have to memorize anything but the city's website.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, hopefully, this is somewhat relevant. Is there any update on the 223rd Street project?
Yeah, so the 22...
In relation to that?
Yes, so the 223, 223rd Street corridor study project is still underway by staff, and we're anticipating bringing that project website and public survey online in about three weeks or so.
So that'll be a separate website?
It's a separate, yeah. They're two separate capital projects. They still relate to each other. There'll be some information on each website talking about it, but the 223rd one will lag about three weeks from now.
Thank you, Andrew.
And just to clarify, the availability to comment will lag three weeks. The project itself, which is a multimillion-dollar project, will not be initiated for a fairly long period of time, and we had received over $300,000 from the legislature for planning for that project. We anticipate there may be more support this year to complete the planning and design, but that is a project that will ultimately be integrated with the steps, but is distinct from the steps and distinct with the timeframes.
Yes, great clarification. So the Marina Steps will go to construction. The 223rd project is a planning project, and we will be chasing that as a capital project through time to try to find funding for the future to actually build that out.
Thank you, Andrew. We received an email from the city of Kent, and for PAC Highway between Kent Des Moines Road and 272nd, they are going to be reducing the speed limit from 45 to 40 miles an hour. So we're pleased to see that, and we appreciate their effort with that. I'd like to introduce Shannon Kirchberg, who is our Emergency Preparedness Director, to introduce our CERT folks and acknowledge the incredible work that they do.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Shannon Kirchberg. I am the Director of Emergency Management and Workplace Safety. I had the pleasure of partnering with South King Fire, Puget Sound Fire, the city of Burian, and the city of Normandy Park, and we conducted a community emergency response team training. It took place over four Saturdays in the month of September. They were in for some long classes. We shrunk an eight-week class into four weeks, and it was very sunny, and they showed up every day. We graduated a total of 19 people between Burian, Normandy Park, and Des Moines, and we are lucky enough to have a few of our graduates here with us tonight to be recognized by council. So if you would please join me. Come on in. Come on in. If we could get a picture with council, that would be wonderful.
Shannon, could you go ahead and introduce everyone, please, or have them say their names? Just, yeah, we just want to know who's here.
I'm going to let you guys introduce yourself, because I don't know everybody's last name, so if you want to go up and introduce yourself, Matt, and tell them what city you live in.
And I'm going to hand them a pin when they...
Perfect.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead. Right to the microphone.
I'll let deputy...
Hi, everybody. I'm Lori Parker, and the proud graduate of the CERT program, which was fabulous. Thank you, by the way.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay. That way?
Shake hands.
We want to give a pin there.
And then we're going to take a picture over here.
Hi, everybody. I'm Frank Parker, proud graduate of the CERT program.
Okay, JR.
Yeah, graduated from me.
Say your name.
Yeah, this is, yeah. What's that?
JR. This is JR. He's one of our CERT graduates.
Thanks, JR. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brenda Askew, from the beautiful city of Des Moines.
My name's Lenny Monterosso. I'm located in Federal Way.
There's still time for you to move south. Or north, I should say, north.
Erica Cole, Burian. Thank you. And thank you, Shannon.
You can move south. Thank you. Come on over here. We'll probably, yeah, take that off, and we'll get the picture over there. So go in there, and we'll kind of get behind you guys. Come on, council. We need to get in there.
Come on, you guys are on a holiday. Everybody want to... Just get on the table. There you go. You have to scoot in. Shannon, come in a little bit. I mean, you go back a little bit. There you go. I'll direct you all. Yeah? All right. Great. Stacy?
Stacy's no accident.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want this membership?
Give the body. I think a few of them are...
Thank you. In addition, I just wanted to give council a brief update. The city of Des Moines participated in the Great Washington Shakeout today. All departments at 10:19 duck-covered, held on for a full minute. Once the minute was up and the earth quit shaking, we all practiced our evacuation routes and went to our evacuation locations. This year, we added safety monitor vests for our safety committee, so people knew who the point of contact was. We also did attendance sheets, so that they could take attendance for all staff to know if there were any staff that were missing during the drill, and all departments now have radios, so that they can radio in to me directly to let me know that all employees are present and accounted for. And one question that came up is, if somebody is missing, do we go back in the building and search for them? And the answer is no. That's just to let me know who's missing, so that we can direct first responders, that we have somebody missing and what building that they were in. So we will be doing a full review of the drill, and we will update our plans and practice again next year, and hopefully add on just a little bit more of a twist, maybe. We have lots of pictures. We've already shared them with the county, as well as the state, for their website, and we look forward to next year. In preparation for the Great Washington Shakeout, I was down at the Mass Center yesterday and participated with Highline College in a tsunami evacuation with their marine biology class. So at 2:30, we duck-covered and held on for an earthquake and then evacuated in preparation for a tsunami. So we walked up the hill and ate cupcakes at the top, so... I don't think that's normal in a tsunami, but it was wonderful. The students learned a lot about tsunami, the waves, how they act, and that they don't stop for buildings. So it was a great exercise, and I enjoyed being a part of that.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah. Mayor, finally, just a brief update. About 10 days ago, we had a hydrofoil demonstration that was done in conjunction with the Washington State Department of Commerce, their maritime division, and it was a demonstration of what they call, it's an electrified ferry, really interesting vessel. It holds eight people, two crew members, and six passengers. And the way it works is that it rises up and basically skates over the water. It's electrified, and because there's not the resistance of the boat to the water, they get much more mileage, they're much more efficient, and obviously, they're much better for the environment in terms of orcas and everything else relative to noise, pollution, and all of that. It was just a demonstration project to learn more about it, see how it worked. We utilized the marina as the landing spot, and we had an accompanying boat that went out with a number of people who could watch the hydrofoil. We had a number of legislators there, elected officials, people from the industry, and so forth. So it was a very interesting demonstration. It generated a lot of attention in the media, which was surprising to us to some degree, but they were all over it. There were a number of stories about Des Moines, about the hydrofoil, fast ferry service, and the potential for Puget Sound to become more of a multimodal transportation route as it had done years and years ago. So at any rate, mayor, with that, I conclude my report.
Quick question, couple of questions. So, I saw Deputy Mayor Buckson there and Councilmember Oxiger at the demo. The invite was to all council members, correct?
Yes.
Did you see any other council members there?
Not that I recall.
Okay. Was there any discussion on purchasing a six-passenger ferry for $500,000?
Well, if there was, I missed it. There was absolutely no discussion about purchasing this boat.
Well, the reason why I ask is the Waterland blog, Mr. Harris's Canbay Forum comments specifically said, and I quote, "And now we seem to be contemplating the purchase of a six-person electric ferry costing $500,000." Would you have any idea about that at all?
No.
Are we opening this up for discussion?
You, the thing is, is I would get, where did you get that information from?
From Como News, from Cairo News. It's on video, it's on Twitter, from their reporters.
That we were discussing buying the, buying?
Yes.
I don't think so.
The city manager is quoted. That is why I make recordings of things, that's why I screen cap things, and I am happy to share that stuff. Now, if you want to go back to the Como reporter Denise, you want to go back to Cairo Seven reporter and question their reportage? So cool. But, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Harris, I think the point is, is you should have verified the information with us. You brought up quite a contentious thing when we weren't considering it at all.
Well, you know, there...
Just wait a minute, sir. I have a floor.
There were the people I spoke with at the event.
Sir, sir, sir. The other thing is, as I recall, you recall, two years ago, you claimed that the city manager purchased a ferry, and that was untrue as well. We wouldn't have had to cancel this year. So what's concerning here is that you're misinforming the public without getting verification. You were...
Point of order.
You, no.
No, point of order.
You had the ability to know so, and you did not, and that's concerning.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, sir?
Decorum. This is, you know, a...
Anyway...
...fight going on here.
Anyway, all right. We will, we will move on. I've made my point. All right. Will the city clerk, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, 2023 to 2025 recycling program funding. Item four, inter-local agreement with city of Normandy Park for municipal court services. Item five, hearing examiner appointment. Item six, 2024 to 2025 on-call consultant agreements for civil engineering services. Item seven, Blueberry Lane, three modified short subdivision final plat. Item eight, draft resolution 23-0061, setting a date for public hearing for vacation of right-of-way, known as 10th Avenue South. Item eight, Draft Resolution 23-0061, setting a date for public hearing for vacation of right-of-way known as 10th Avenue South. Item nine, North Hill Elementary Walkway Improvements Project, and that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read, Mayor.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Harris.
Yes, Mayor. Item five, the hearing examiner, and item seven, Blueberry Lane.
Okay. Any other council member wish to pull any item? Seeing none, we'll be voting on items one, two, three, four, six, eight, nine. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those items on the consent agenda pass unanimously. All right, item five, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, and I beg the Council's indulgence. This is really more of a question. I was hoping to get just a brief explainer on a type-three land use decision. Just, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
The, the hearing examiner, it says that the hearing examiner will look at type-three land use decisions. And I just wanted to get sort of an example of a type-three land use decision. If, if that's onerous, then let's move on. This is informational for me.
Yeah, I, I have the code up. So we have six different types of land use decisions. So type three, is that what you asked about?
Yes, sir.
So that's a quasi-judicial and other decisions made after legally required opportunity for public comment. So in our land use review procedures, like I said, there's six different types. And so examples of this would be an appeal of an administrative land use decision, a conditional use permit, conditional approval or denial of a project based upon SEPA, variance, abatement of non-conforming uses. So there's a number of different matters that the hearing examiner would hear.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve confirmation appointment of Alex Sidels. As the city hearing examiner and to authorize the city manager to sign the professional services agreement with the law offices of Alex Sidels, PLLC substantially in the form as attached.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. All those in favor, any more discussion before I take vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, the Blueberry Lane Modified Short Plaid. Councilmember Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is more rhetorical. It is just a sadness to me that we are now voting on an expansion of Blueberry Lane. Basically, we've talked about reinstating the sound code, but tonight, there will be two items where we are moving ahead with building projects that will not benefit from having a sound code. And not another structure should be built or should have been built over the last 11 years without sound insulation that we used to require, and that's it. Let's, oh, and just understand that this is not any slam against the developer because they simply comply with the code as it is presented to them. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Oh, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to concur with city staff approval of the final plaid entitled Blueberry Lane Three, city file number LU A2018-0067.
I have a second. Second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, I see Deputy Mayor Buxton, I see Councilmember Nutting and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Oxger. So the, Councilmember Oxger, because it's in code and enforcement, I have to, I need you to state the rec, for the record, the factual basis that supports your decision to not concur with the community development direction on this decision.
Okay. My objection is the fact, okay, I, your explanation is that this is whether or not to concur with, whether the steps were all followed or?
It, it, it's, it's in full compliance of code and zoning and so forth. So to have a no vote requires you to give a factual basis.
I need to change my vote to yes.
Okay. All right, motion passes six-zero. All right, thank you. We're moving right along here. The second reading of draft ordinance number 23-042, Public Hearing on Proposed Land Use and Text Code Amendments for the Business Park Moratorium Area and Adopting Finding a Fact. There will be a staff presentation by the Community Development Director Denise Lathrop, and I now open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Denise Lathrop, Community Development Director. So you've seen this slide before. It basically is just providing the same information we've had each time about the legal context that enables cities to establish moratorium. So we established this moratorium last October and it is due to expire on October 26th. And then in terms of the planning context, if we, as we've stated before, we're currently evaluating our comprehensive plan and development regulations. As part of this periodic review, we're required to accommodate new jobs and housing targets that are allocated to us by King County. And we are also designated a high-capacity transit community. Another thing we have already discussed in prior meetings is that we've invested a significant amount of money on transportation and infrastructure improvements in the Business Park area, particularly north of 216th and along, along 216th and 24th Avenue South. And what we have found, and part of that was to facilitate the creation of family wage jobs in our community. And what we have found is that the level of development in both the warehouse and logistics sectors have significantly exceeded what we had initially planned for, particularly with the, not just the build-out of the Business Park, but also to the east, the areas where Bartels and some of those other facilities are on the east side of 24th Avenue South. So this chart here just, or this shows what the public process has been to date. Again, I mentioned we established the, or the moratorium back in October of 2022. We had a public hearing as required in December, and then we had another public hearing in April to extend the moratorium. Council had a first reading on October, or on September 1st, and this is the second reading tonight. We did have a requirement for the Washington Department of Commerce to review our draft ordinance and proposed changes. And that 60-day comment period lapsed on October 17th and we did not receive any comments. And then this just provides an overview of the draft ordinance. As currently proposed, it reclassifies the preferred land use for four parcels from Business Park to multifamily. It also reclassifies the zoning from the Business Park Zone to the RM 2400 Zone. That's a residential multifamily zone. It establishes an innovation district in an area along 216th Street between 24th Avenue and the post office area. And then it limits development along 24th Avenue south of 216th, which where, is where the roadway can, sort of narrows down to a residential street. It also, with the moratorium and the proposed zoning change, it's going to help facilitate the creation of workforce housing. And then it also provides for the protections of some of the natural park areas, the Barnes Creek Trail and preservation of the Stephen J. Underwood Park. And lastly, it's supported by the work that we had completed by Echo Northwest. So the first couple of bullets were responses to council questions that came up at the first reading, and those were provided to you in your council packet, what the definition of workforce housing was, what the densities were for the RM 2400 and the RM 1800 Zone. And basically, these, the densities for these zones are, are calculated based on a square footage per acre. So if you take an acre 43,560 and you divide it by 1,800 square feet, that gets you around 24 units per acre. And similarly with the RM 2400 Zone. And then in terms of what uses were permitted in the RM 2400 and the RM 1800, the only difference between those zones related to automobile parking. And so I am going to be talking about some proposed amendments in a minute, but that will be something I'll, I'll speak to at that time. We did receive a public comment today, which council was also in receipt of, from an interested party. And their request wasn't consistent with our current planning goals, nor the findings of the study that was done by Echo Northwest. We also, as was expressed at the last meeting, we had several property owners for the PAC stainless and Graycon buildings that had been working with us to make sure that the limit, the language in Limitation 93 would preserve their current rights as they have developed their site. They had, they were, had significant involvement in the build-out of that south subarea. And so I will talk in a minute about what the proposed edits are to that, that limitation. And then lastly, we received comments from a representative for the Hill family requesting that the zoning be changed to the RM 1800 to allow them more density and to add additional building height. Staff would be supportive of changing the zoning to the RM 1800 Zone to increase the density in that area because we have housing targets we need to meet. But with regard to building heights, we would like to dock it that with our 2024 comprehensive plan amendments, primarily because the city council has had a policy or general philosophy about when we're looking at building heights, we need to look at them holistically. And Councilmember Nutting has been, as Chair of the Economic Development Committee, he has always been the one that has been championing this. Because what happens, we have other areas in the city that have these zones. And so we want to make sure we have time to look at what potential impacts are of those changes. But again, as you know, we are working on our comp plan amendments and zoning reviews. And so that information is in progress and we will definitely loop in all participants interested in participating in that discussion down the way. And so I have two amendments that I'm going to be discussing here. So Amendment One basically would change Section Three in the draft ordinance to change the proposed zoning from the RM 2400 to the RM 1800 Zone. And it would also change the zoning on the zoning map. And so this map to the left here is just basically showing it would go from Business Park to the RM 1800 Zone. And then this next amendment, Amendment Number Two relates to two of the limitations to our permitted uses table. And so Limitation 17 was a limitation associated with the RM 1800 Zone. And so what we wanted to do is add this, add the limitation that the public parking areas would not be permitted in the area in the west and south subareas located south of 216th Street. And then under Limitation 93, the text in green is really the change from what was previously provided to you at the first reading. And so basically, what this does is it exempts those existing businesses that were developed and have surplus land on their own properties. And it allows them to expand and develop their properties as, as they had envisioned when they initially developed their sites. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I've left some motions up here for council consideration.
Thank you. Is there any more presentation before I go to public comment? None? I do. I just, was there, if there was any more, I was checking if there was any more presentation. All right. It's now time for public comment. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or become boisterous, threatening or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting and you will have three minutes to speak. And the only one to sign up is Mr. Simon Upple. Sir, you have the podium.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, Council Members and Staff. My name is Simon Upple. I'm a representative for the Hill family. I'm a land use attorney with the firm Karen Cross and Hempelman in Seattle. So as you know, you might have recalled from last month, then since this discussion started, the Hill family has had the belief this whole time that business park zoning is the most beneficial zoning for this site. We're aware of the studies and the understanding of the development that there's been a lot of business park and industrial development in that area. But we just believe that area, the best and highest use is industrial zoning. I'm not sure if the letter that you received today that was referenced is the same one from Lake Union Partners, but they also submitted a letter today with the same belief. They're working with a nonprofit organization, Goodwill, to bring some development in that area. And the Hill family shares the same belief that industrial zoning is the best zoning and the business park zoning would be the best for their property. However, we're aware that there's also other considerations at this time, primarily with the residential uses. So we would recommend that the higher-density residential use be implemented, the RM 1800. We also acknowledge the fact that building heights are something that has to be looked at holistically. But we just feel that for this property, the best opportunity is to increase the building height to allow for more flexibility and to allow for mixed use and just overall create that innovation district that I think everybody is envisioning. So with that being said, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Second time. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Third and final time. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? Seeing no one, council, do you have any questions? And I repeat, this is for questions only. So go ahead, Councilmember Oxger, you have the floor.
Actually, this is a question for the city attorney. I missed the first and, or the first part of this hearing, public hearing, for, because I was ill. Am I allowed to participate in this?
Yes, you can, you can participate.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Councilmember Steinmetz?
A couple of things. Given our, our need to comply with the command and conduct, do we need more jobs or do we need more housing at this current point in the process?
I mean, it's, it's, we are given targets and so basically, we need. I mean, we are given targets, and so basically, we need to have the appropriate zoning to accommodate the job targets and that. What we did find through our economic study was rezoning those properties to residential would not significantly impact our job capacity per se because the warehouse-type jobs have a much lower employee ratio, and our hope is that with an innovation district, that it will create more job opportunities. So it's likely going to be offset there.
And just as a follow-up, the RM 18 zoning amendment that you're proposing seem to be referencing open-air parking. And I'd just like a little more explanation, a little broader explanation.
Yeah. So this, we have a permitted uses table, and often, like, if you were reviewing the table, it might say something is permitted, and it'll have a P, but it might say an L seventeen. And so the reason that this footnote seventeen is there is that under the RM 1800 zone, that zone allows open-air parking in the study area that we've been looking at. And that's really a use that doesn't create jobs necessarily, or it's not a high job creation. And so we recognize that maybe to the north, they need to have more parking, or there may be a need for parking, but we did not want to have that in that South Sub area, if that makes sense.
I guess kind of what I was getting at is to make the distinction between a parking lot versus covered parking?
It...
Because that's, I mean, that's how I'm interpreting it.
You know, that's a good question. I mean, I'm assuming open-air public parking would be more of a parking lot. But even if it's structured parking, it's not an active use that we're really trying to encourage in terms of creating an employment hub of research, development, innovation.
Before I go to you, Councilmember Harris, did I see you raise your hand, Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Well, he couldn't.
Okay. All right. I'd seen you first. Moving on to Councilmember Harris then.
Thank you. And I don't want to blindside you, but do you have some just general idea of how many jobs are, you know, in the area around Graycon? I'm just curious, because it covers a lot of ground and...
Yeah, I don't have that exact number. But when we did our urban growth capacity study, that took into effect the existing jobs in the area, as well as properties where additional job creation could occur, and based on vacant and redevelopable parcels. But that was done on a citywide scale, so we really, that would have to be drilling down deep to get the exact numbers.
And this may be the dumbest question since questions, but when you go to RM 1800, does that put underground parking on the table?
Not necessarily, no. It is, it's just basically stating how many units you can get, and because it's basically a math problem, and you're trying to figure out how many dwelling units you could fit, it yields about twenty-four per acre. But there's landscaping requirements, that kind of thing. And most of the projects we have developed, that have developed in the RM 1800 and RM 2400 zone, it's almost always surface parking. Structural parking is so expensive, it's like forty-five thousand dollars a stall. And so you aren't going to see that until you get into steel and concrete construction and you're building seven-story-plus buildings, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. So I heard the concerns considering heights on the RM 1800. At a later date, should we consider to maybe go up? Is that totally doable, or do we need to do it today?
Well, we may have to make some adjustments to how the density is calculated, because even if we were to raise the heights here, because of the way the density is calculated, it's based on land area, the units per land area. And so we may want to make some tweaks to the zoning to where maybe density is calculated in a different way. So for example, we use floor area ratio in Pacific Ridge, and there may be some better ways to calculate density that we would benefit from that, too, so.
So for the purposes of today, though, we can address that later, and it's not necessary in this approval process. I just want to...
Correct. Correct. And we do want to look at that, and we will need to anyway as part of our comp plan update.
All right. Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, thank you. As the Chair of Economic Development, will that be coming in front of the Economic Development Committee anytime soon, or when can we take a look at that, the floor area and the calculations to?
I would say at the, you know, early 2024, because we are doing a lot of housing analysis. We just received another grant from Commerce to help us with some of the middle housing pieces that have, they all merge together at the end when we have to have everything adopted. So it's perfect timing for that.
Very good. Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to enact draft ordinance number two-three-dash-zero-four-two, adopting comprehensive plan and text code amendments and finding of fact for the moratorium area.
Discussion, council, before I take a vote. Councilmember Harris?
Do you need a second?
Oh, I need a second. I'm sorry. I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. I saw it, but I didn't say it. My apologies. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. I would move to hold this over to our next meeting, which is next week. These two amendments, I think it's strictly perfunctory, but I do live in the area, and I've run into several residents who I think would be interested in these two amendments. So I would just like to make sure that they have a heads up before enthusiastically voting yes.
Well, first, I have to get the other motions on the floor, apparently. Okay, so go ahead, Councilmember Nutting.
I move to include proposed Amendment One to draft ordinance number two-three-dash-zero-four-two.
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton and Councilmember Nutting.
I move to include proposed Amendment Two to draft ordinance number two-three-dash-zero-four-two.
Second.
All right. I messed this up. The second motion has to wait.
Okay.
So we have a couple of issues on the floor, because Councilmember Harris spoke. He's trying to propose that we delay this another week. Do I have a second on that? I have a second. Do we have any discussion before we take a vote? Councilmember Harris?
So I acted as I did just now, because it's kind of hard for me to vote on two amendments that, when I know that these are of interest to the residents. So at the risk of, you know, seeming a bit difficult, if we just put it off a week, I'm sure it will be a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Would you respond to that, City Manager?
Yeah. This, as Denise outlined, the process has been very comprehensive process for almost a year. And the second extent, or the extension of the moratorium terminates October 26th. So really, there's not much of an option. To put it over is basically to kill it. To vote on it tonight, you know, it's still in effect.
Is there any more for discussion before I take a vote on his motion? Councilmember Harris?
As a point of clarification, isn't the next meeting October the 26th?
I can add to that. Ordinances take time. Each ordinance has a specific date that it's effective. This ordinance, it's effective five days after passage. So in theory, if you voted on it on the 26th, it wouldn't be effective until Halloween, and the moratorium would end on the 26th.
And what would be the consequence of that gap of five days?
The existing zoning code, as it exists, pre-moratorium, would be in effect for those five days without a moratorium.
Okay. Well, again, I guess, you know, what would be the consequence of having that gap? Is there some concern that a developer would swoop in, you know, on Devil's Night and do something contrary to this?
Yeah. I mean, that's the reason why we do moratoriums.
No, I, okay. Thank you.
All right. So we're on the motion to postpone this till October 26. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. Motion fails. Five, or one five. Okay. Moving on to the original motion, on the amendment, with motion one, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of motion one on the amendment, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris. Motion passes five-one. So, Councilmember Nutting?
I move to include proposed Amendment Two to draft ordinance number two-three-dash-zero-four-two.
I have a second. A second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of motion two, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris. Motion passes five-one. Now we're back to the original motion. All right. So the amendments have been made to the motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that we have this correct, but now that we have the two amendments passed, the original motion would be to enact draft ordinance number twenty-three oh four-two as amended.
Okay. So with Councilmember Nutting?
Sorry, I was sleeping over here. I move to enact draft ordinance number two-three-dash-zero-four-two, adopting comprehensive plan and text code amendments and finding of fact for the moratorium area as amended in one and two.
I have a second. I have a second from Councilmember Steinmetz. Any discussion before I take the vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, and the motion passes unanimously six-zero. All right. All right. Now we move on to the new business portion. This is a time for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the City Manager at any time. Do any councilmembers have new business they would like to propose? Seeing none, we will move on to board and committee reports, and we will start with you, Councilmember Oxger.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report.
All right. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. No report at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. So, given that it's that time, I attended the North Hill Community Club Candidate Night. Thanks you to them, and also a similar event or different at Wesley, which will be put on public video hopefully soon. It was interesting to take questions from both my...
Line of order, Mayor. You cannot campaign from the dais.
I'm not campaigning.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, this is a, he is right. This is a campaign form.
Fine. Fair enough. Fair enough.
Attending is one thing, but getting...
No, no, no. Fair enough. So I attended an MRSC seminar with electeds from across the state on community engagement best practice, which, good ideas. Let's see. I do have a comment regarding the letter that's been on social media, press release about Councilmember Oxger. I wrote a letter to our city attorney asking to understand what authority the mayor can direct him to write the county prosecutor to obtain that ruling. I am not certain that the mayor has such authority to direct the attorney or any member of staff to do such a thing, as I understand, council manager government. It is also the case that we instituted a rule in our new protocol manual explicitly banning councilmembers from holding multiple offices. So apart from anything else, it points out a flaw, I see, in the protocol manual and in a lot of our processes whereby we basically act on things until we know that they're enforceable or that we have all of the i's dotted and so forth. We spent four meetings, committee meetings, and three full council meetings on the thing. And so obviously, as with any 1.0, it has some flaws. I wish the public had been engaged in that because these rules really matter a lot. I mean, people will show up about Redondo, they'll show up about the Marina when it's to their personal interest. But these rules affect your government like every, every meeting going forward. And it's a shame, I don't know how to get people interested in it. But it is my fervent wish that very soon there are three votes to update that protocol manual and apply some fixes, and not via any complicated ad hoc committee, just a couple of simple meetings, because every piece of legislation should have two readings. See what I did there? Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah. Although I missed last meeting because I was over in Asia visiting my son who's going to school there, I did get back in time for both the candidates' forums and found them quite interesting and informative. And so I hope people got a chance to see them, and if not, take a look at them when the video, various videos might be published from both forums. Secondly, is that the council protocols manual took four meetings because Councilmember Harris had a question on almost every section of them, several of which, his suggestions, the council turned around and adopted. So, you know, this hasn't been an issue where people have been, where at least members of the council have been left out. In fact, the very public information from the dais was the discussion with everybody about those rules, and some of which were adopted, some of which weren't. So I don't know that there is a great need to change them, but I'm certainly open to any suggestions that anybody might have. But they haven't been shared with me, and I was a member of the committee to do that. Lastly, you know, it's nice to be back. It's nice to be here and see how, you know, Des Moines didn't really change a lot in two weeks. And that's a good thing. So, but we're also, you know, if I can just kind of give a public service announcement, we're at a section that happens in every election cycle where there's a lot of misinformation put out there, and take it with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. So since we met last time, I participated in about twenty-five engagements with the community, whether it's with community, staff, boards, committees, phone calls. Thoroughly enjoyed my community, and I was able to advocate well for the interests that were, the things we're interested in here. I did want to make a comment about the protocol manual. I don't believe it was even in effect when this process that has been discussed was, had begun. And so crisscross the timeline there. In regard to a couple of the meetings, one issue that is being discussed right now in response to Proposition One in King County is crisis care centers. And I guess I just want to let our community know in regard to these centers, they're intimately tied with nine-eight-eight, which is a... they're, they're intimately tied with nine eight eight, which is a suicide prevention process, but there's a lot of discussion and care going into these discussions regionwide to make sure it's very clear what these centers will do, how they're being operated, who runs them, who's, who comes in, who goes out, what kind, what happens there before they are allowed to be placed in certain places in our communities. Also, a lot of talk about the 2024 session coming up and everywhere I go, the two main or the three main items are public safety, support for the, a lot of the housing requirements that came down the line last, last session and behavioral health and mental health issues. So that is top three, it seems like. Want to offer a special thank you tonight. It's, as you're very well aware, we're, a lot of us are wearing purple. It's DV Awareness Month and several of us participated. The mayor was there, I think, in some activities that were put on by Lighthouse Northwest is the host of our safe house in town. So there was a five K, citizens came, Buryan Wellness, I want to call out a few people, Rams Cross Country Team, Lighthouse, Mountain Church, Hope Church, North Hill Community Church, Park Run and myriad community members came out to celebrate and support this outreach into our community. So big, huge thanks to the community and all of these organizations and, and the mayor. And I don't think, was anybody else participated in those events? So just wanted to say thank you. Great month so far in awareness.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. I'll close with this. Being on council is a tough job and one of the things I've found in the past, just short of two years being mayor, it's a very heavy lift. I swore an oath to defend the Constitution and the laws of the state, county and city. And when I think there's an issue and I get confirmation from the city attorney and the King County prosecutor, then I'm obligated to go forward. The fact is, is that there's a bunch of misinformation about there, out there again on this issue as the other one and that's why I'm so passionate about misinformation because what it does is set people afire when it's not actually accurate. There are even comments about precedents and so forth. My advice to the public is the courts have this situation in hand. Let them handle it. That's where it should be, that's where it's supposed to be. And from what I understand, every council member, if they feel a law's been violated, has the right to press the issue. And when you get types of confirmation like the city attorney or the King County prosecutor, there is validity in it and you have to go forward. I had two choices here. I could have looked the other way or I could do what I'm doing, right? And if you want a mayor that's going to look the other way, then I'll resign today. Thank you. With that, the next council meeting will be October 26th and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All passes unanimously. Have a good weekend, everybody.